So, this is the minutes for the work session of September 12th, 2017. This is the minutes from the informal session of September 12th, 2017. Oh, I'm sorry, this was the work session minutes. These are the informal session minutes. Excuse me. These are minutes that we have all initialed, that we are putting on the consent agenda, unless I hear otherwise. September 19th informal session. And then the formal session of September 14th. Formal session of September the 1st. And that is all the minutes. Any questions? So those will all go on the consent agenda. Thank you very much. And moving ahead then, we do have from Health and Human Services. Mary?
Okay, we had applied for a grant from OHA, from the Oregon Health Authority, to, for school-based health center mental health grant. That was already approved. And that was the amount of eighty-six thousand six hundred from, for the period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018. It's included in their budget and this is just the actual grant. And this is for onsite mental health support for Willamina and Yenhill Carlton, the school-based health clinics.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Okay. And here we have a notice from our technology people that they have some excess machine grain that they want to dispose of following our...
We used to see once in a while. Is there, I think there's nonprofits such as the rescue mission, such as the drop-in center where, you know, that hopefully we will get that if we could somehow hold those or see besides just the school districts, because it seems like the school districts' technology budget, you know, they're always replacing their technology. And I think there, is there nonprofit or people as we look into workforce training and job application hunting, are there more nonprofits and stuff that we can get those there? I think like the drop, I think about the drop-in center, having two or three computers out there in the drop-in center that the kids could use, you know, may be beneficial. So it's just an idea, I'd like to maybe besides the school districts, if our procedures allow, get word out to those organizations and see if they may be interested.
Of course, I know you, Youth Opportunity Outreach Project in McMinnville, which does job training and GEDs, could probably use them. Hasn't our policy been basically strictly for the school? We have to adopt?
Adopt this policy.
We changed our policy just a couple, three years ago.
They used to be open. We used to do...
We sell them, anybody could come in and we have an option or basically just open the door and people could come in and buy.
Yeah, I'm not for a public auction.
So what I would say to this is, we have this on an ongoing basis. If we want to take a look at our policy and look at changing that, we can certainly do it. I would like to give Shane the go-ahead to proceed with this group.
Sure, sure, no problem.
And then we can go back, possibly filed against Union Pacific by an individual who claims ownership of part of that land. According to our county council, who has studied this quite diligently, the deed itself precludes his ownership of that. It states very clearly that that is an exception in his title. And there's an additional title going back to the original purchase, precluding Southern Pacific, if I'm correct.
We have the original deed, but yeah, it's probably not appropriate to get too much into the litigation.
No, it just, it's, but anyway, the amendment to the agreement is that we would proceed with the purchase as it was originally documented, only this allows Union Pacific to stay on board until this is resolved. So that's what this is.
I think there's, is there a little bit more to that in terms of our liability for future litigation costs?
Related to this particular...
This and others?
Complaint? What the amendment, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but what basically what it does is it acknowledges, we are acknowledging that the litigation is out there, we're going to go ahead and purchase it with this litigation. And that they have agreed to stay involved, but we would uncover any of their, not the FDP, any of their legal expenses involved in this claim going forward. This, this did nothing to change or alter our potential liability for future claims. It's been long discussed and understood that we would have any potential responsibility for claims such as this that arose after we had already purchased the property. So it doesn't change that. It just happens that this one arose prior to closing.
Right.
So let me just understand this. So what we're saying is that we will now, well, obviously we're going to be incurring the expenses of fighting this particular or litigating this particular instance with Mr. Manson?
Correct.
And going forward, if others were to arise, and after the sale closes?
It would be the county's responsibility.
And then it would be the county's responsibility. So we're incurring the expense and we would also be then reimbursing or picking up the costs or helping Union Pacific with their costs?
Correct.
Because that's...
Because they don't typically stay involved post-sale in these types of claims. They have agreed that it would be, they're willing to stay involved under the terms of the amendment, which is, yes, we would be reimbursing them for any of their own outside council costs.
So it's in their interest to stay involved at this particular juncture because of future claims that they might have?
You'd have to ask them, but, but, you know, at the moment, the county's not purchasing the entire corridor. They may have interest in protecting the balance of the corridor. Presumably, they have an interest in protecting this sale to a certain degree. So, but beyond that, you'd have to ask them.
So the lack of title insurance, what bearing does that have on this particular situation?
Nothing.
None? And we don't know how much it's going to cost us to litigate this?
We do not. Don't expect it to be anything out of the ordinary. Obviously, if the case resolves itself at an earlier stage, it'll be less expensive. Costs will be higher if it goes to trial.
Okay. I have concerns about that adding to sort of the other concerns about the trial, but so anyway, non-consent.
Okay. So that will go into other business?
Or the lender wants us to fill us. I have a big concern, and of course, I've said before that I believe that we're spending a lot of excess money by letting departments pick out their own equipment and not looking at a countywide program. I think we're probably spending twenty to thirty percent more annually than we should. But until we look at that, but for this one, I'm okay. But in the future, I may not be okay without looking at how we manage all this in the future to ensure that when we do get financing, that it is from a large corporation that does their own financing. We're not obliged to a third, third party for the financing piece of it. So that's all I have to say.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So we're moving forward with that on the...
Consent.
Just leaving it on our consent agenda. Okay. The next piece we have here is amendment number one to the MIP agreement. This is, we have on our road improvement plan, we had allocated X number of dollars and a portion of the work, as Loop Road is the one that we're talking about, was going to be done in-house. But because of all of the road work that we've had to do due to the extreme winter last year, our road crews just aren't able. In communicating with Mainline Paving, who's our main paving contractor, they've agreed to pick this up and get it done as part of the contract, it does call for us to do a change order. Now, the, there's two pieces to this and I wasn't absolutely clear the reason we have to do this twice, but there's a fifteen thousand dollar increase in the total price that that's what we're approving, that this change order increases the price, which we have the money, so there's...
It was going to cost a hundred and...
Eighty-some thousand.
It's also internally...
Now it's going to cost an added fifteen thousand dollars to have it done by the outside contractor. Correct.
But the purpose for the amendment is we needed to add this entire scope of work to their contract. The net overall cost increase is not...
That's, that's the piece. Thank you, Christian. We are amending, we're amending the contract with Mainline Paving. That's one piece. And then we're approving the additional fifteen thousand is the second piece. So that's why it's a two-part. I'm sorry, I was trying to think what the two reasons were.
Yeah, that's the reason that in the amendment, you'll see, they've asked for a slight contingency, just in case.
Right.
The cost exceeds what they...
So that is the purpose of this, and that's so we can complete the MIP this year. Okay? Consent agenda? And then we have here, Mr. Ken Huffer has one here for consideration. Ba-ba-bum.
We had a request from McMinnville Noon Rotary.
Oh.
For the peace poll, correct?
Oh, yes. This is the peace poll that I think we've all been approached at one time or another about. And...
Yeah, I've forwarded an email to everyone and I don't really have much more information beyond what was in the email.
Anybody want to make a, because I'm not, so if anybody wants to put this on the agenda, we can.
Not, not this time myself.
Yeah, I do have concern about adding something to county property that then becomes, how do we, how do we...
Who is going to, you're here, you can't be here now, you, and then it sort of opens
things up. I think we ought to keep it nice and neutral. It ought to be Switzerland here.
Yeah, not, you know, I, I really don't, I guess, I have some other concerns with the peace poll. I'm not opposed to going on county property. I'm opposed to it that where a location, and I think if those kind of designations, we have to be like Commissioner Starett, we have to be very careful how we, how we do those kind of designations. So I'm not, I'm just not there at the moment.
So at this point in time, we'll pull this off.
And I'll follow up with us when...
Okay. We have another item here that is the city of McMinnville, you know...
They want a letter of support for DLCD to do a, basically to pay for the inventory. It's from Heather Richards. They need to do an inventory study on available lands in McMinnville. And they're just asking for a letter of support from, from us, and that's the actual letter. So if we can approve it on Thursday, we can have it signed and Heather can pick it up because it's due, their grant application is due on Friday, the 13th. And everyone has a copy of it?
Yeah.
Oh, you should have a copy of it.
I know that this came up at COG too, is the idea of inventory of available lands and buildings. So I don't know if this is, maybe there's one after the same grant or something.
I'm not sure, but I know it's McMinnville, specific to McMinnville and their application.
Just to the city of McMinnville.
This one, this one.
This one is.
All right. So we're going to be supportive of this letter of support for McMinnville to pursue this grant?
And to, and to sign it on Thursday?
While we would sign the letter of support.
Yes.
Correct.
I'm awful, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Okay. This is the same thing? Yeah, okay. And then this just came a few minutes ago, but the governor is going to, has signed a proclamation designating the week of the 15th as hands and words and hands are not for hurting. We've done that every year, but this year, the young lady who's been our care bearer, Gretchen, is retiring and is no longer going to be doing this. So, and nobody has stepped up to be her replacement for Seroptimus. But if we want to make that proclamation, we certainly can. The reason I'm putting it in now, Monday, the 15th, next week, so if we did this on Thursday, then it would designate next week as words and hands are not for hurting. So I'm bringing that, if, if you want to, we can have...
We support it all, I'm with the city.
And Commissioner Olson has his purple shirt on. And plus, I...
I remember this chair, it's his responsibility to dress up in the care bearer.
Well, I was going to suggest that you might be more...
That vice chair. But I, I was going to, you know, I'm glad you said that, I didn't want to...
But also, I don't know if you remember when you first got here that I put your hand on the...
I remember that.
And I had you trace your hand?
I remember that.
And I said, hands and words are not for hurting, and that's how we operate around here?
That's right.
So just to let you know.
So it's two against one is what you're trying to say?
So you have to, so you did...
So I'll talk to Gretchen about the bear costume and what we are...
I'm out all next week and the weekend thereafter. There's our care bear.
She's a care bear?
There's our care bear.
Okay. So the question on the floor is?
Yes, yes, we're good.
So we will, if staff can get a letter or a proclamation prepared for us.
Can do.
Thank you very much. We have one more piece of business here, and this is, we have a county road that is privately maintained. And there are, if I'm not mistaken, eleven owners on this property?
Are there?
Anyway, there's been a petition signed by the, I think it's nine of the eleven that live on this road that privately maintain it, that want a gate placed on the road. We've had these come before us quite often where we have a private road, but because it's, it's a county road that is maintained privately. So in order for them to do anything blocking passage on that road, the county has to...
Is it the other two? They just haven't signed it or they're opposed to?
And maybe if somebody can give me a little bit of help here?
I can give you some information. I am going to have to recuse myself from this vote because it is the road that I live on.
Smith Road.
But interestingly enough, the road is half in Clackamas County, half in Yenhill County.
And I thought that was a driveway.
And everyone thinks it's a driveway, but it's a road. Or as...
Commissioners, are you, are you discussing this in order to decide whether or not you want to hold a public hearing? Or because a public hearing wouldn't be appropriate for informal session?
Informal session. I've just, this is...
Thought it was a public hearing.
If, I thought it was going to be as well, but if so, it isn't held for informal...
Well, we're doing, for the, for our public hearings, we're discussing it.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted.
Oh, so I, but I won't be discussing.
So you are recusing.
I am recusing.
Because you don't want to...
You may want to say something before the hearing. I didn't know when it was scheduled yet. Is it scheduled for this week?
Yes.
Have we scheduled?
Yes, Thursday.
It was scheduled for Thursday.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Fine with that.
That's what happens when you have a crime with that. All right. So with that...
I have a couple items.
Oh, sure.
I'm picking up where, I got a filling from Laura here.
Yeah.
You don't have to.
Well, there's a couple items that, just kind of looking for some direction on how you want to proceed, whether or not you want to proceed with something this week or if, or just looking for some direction on how you'd like to... There was an email that Laura had forwarded to each of you, I believe, last week before she was heading out, from Jeff Knapp from Visit McMinnville, and it's regarding their request for the community wayfinding.
Mm-hmm.
So in the email, he talks about that basically it's a request, they have a six thousand dollar gap and it looks like, it looks like, would love the county to consider supporting our efforts by contributing the remaining six thousand dollars to help us turn this plan into reality. So it's a request, and I wasn't sure if you wanted to consider it this week or if you wanted Jeff to come back and present, or if there was any questions on it.
How much did Tour McMinnville contribute? Because they've got five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
I think our last, if I remember, at our last informal sessions, we had agreed based after that we got Linfield to allocate up to five thousand dollars.
They did not. They're not giving any money.
No, that's a said...
Two each.
Two each.
And we were, original request was for two, and they were going to try to get two from Linfield and two from...
Downtown Association.
Downtown Association.
They got some from downtown association.
But there was someone else who said no, and that would have been...
It's in that, I remember the email, that's why.
So when they couldn't come up with a difference, they changed the ask from two to six.
There were two other parties that said no to that.
Yeah, one was...
I know Linfield was one of them.
Linfield said no and...
It should be in that email.
It's the Chamber?
Was it the Chamber?
No, it wasn't the Chamber. It might have been the Downtown.
It was the Downtown Association?
They're the ones that were better hit the most, so I can't see the, unless it was an additional two thousand from the Downtown.
No, I think they hadn't been approached by the time when he had asked us for two and he...
So he was able to approach Downtown Association, the Chamber and Linfield and the other two? Downtown pledged two thousand, the other two organizations were not able to contribute at this time?
Chamber and...
So Chamber and Linfield said no.
Okay.
So, you know, the other thing I was thinking about, is it okay to discuss this?
I don't, I don't know. But what kind of an issue is it? It's just...
Well, it's a request.
It's a request for funds and we can discuss it, we can't reach a decision.
Right.
But we certainly share our...
The reason I didn't put it on the agenda is because I didn't know if there was more questions that came out of this, that we needed to go back to Jeff, or if Jeff, you know.
Well, I think we can have some discussion on it, but it's probably going, I don't think we're going to be ready to move it forward unless I'm mistaken.
I'll just reiterate what I said the last couple of times, is that I think it's good for the county to be able to tie us into some kind of signage we might need for the future. Is it for econ, for the county, is it for economic development, absolutely not, it doesn't affect our economic development of the county properties. But I think from a directional standpoint, letting, letting our customers know where all of our different facilities are, I think we're better off tying into what they have and then coming up with our own. And I certainly wouldn't want to tie in with what they have without being part of it. But I'm, I don't know about the six thousand, the six thousand is a little steep for me.
Well, I'm a little concerned when the Chamber didn't step up because this really impacts them more significantly than the county. And that, I don't know what the reasoning would be behind that. And Linfield College also, they depend so much on the community to support their activities and directing people to that, to their facility in and of itself would be, and I, I'm having a little hard time understanding how it was presented to them that they would...
You know, two thousand dollars is, is not a lot for, I would think, for Linfield as far as investment in this, and especially the Chamber because they do directly benefit. Sometimes I feel like we're kind of like the go-to deep pockets and let's go to the county now for the whole six. The thing that really concerns me about this ask is that recently, was it last time? Do you remember Commissioner, if, when Sheridan asked us to help them fund a sign?
That was on our small grant.
On the small grant. And what was our response to that?
I'm not sure. I know we have provided funding to communities that have used that for signage, and I'm not sure if that was Sheridan.
I think we said no to Sheridan.
I think we said no to Sheridan, but it, and I'm not certain the reason, but it was on their small grant application.
Right. And then recently, I was visiting with their, their redevelopment group, and they were talking about how they had put up this little, some, the Bridge Street Coffee had put up a little sign so that folks on the highway can see it, and it was directing all this traffic, and they were actually seeing people come in and spend money in their downtown, which I thought, that's great. And, and you can understand why in their situation, because they have no money. That would have been a game changer for them. And we said no to them, and yet I feel like it wouldn't be fair to say yes to McMinnville when there are other options for them, and when some other big players said no.
And I, and you know, and to be fair, in the, in the discussion, and Willamina was the city that approached us in a small grant the previous year, and we did fund some signage for them. So, you know, it's, it hasn't been a blanket decision, but Willamina likes Sheridan. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to add, they also asked in the last round of small grants for a grant for the Wayfinding project, which they did decline also.
Yeah.
Who did?
We did.
Travel with McMinnville.
Oh, yes, right. For that, yes.
Oh, yes.
The Wayfinder is a separate committee, different from Travel with McMinnville. But, so anyway, we could, I guess, agree to the original two thousand dollar request and they would still be on the hook.
Do we want to put it on the agenda for Thursday for consideration?
Might as well.
The full request and then whatever the decision is can be reached at the formal session, whether it's at that amount, less, or to not approve.
Yeah, because you know, if we, if we get to the point where we treat signage, no matter what city it is, more like we would a small grant for like facade improvements or something like that, then I think everybody's playing by the same rules. But right now, I have to agree with Mary that right now, with, with what they have to draw from right here, even though I think it's great for the county to have a unified signage.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
I'm not so sure at this point in time that, I certainly don't feel comfortable with the six thousand.
And, you know, just like we're making a statement out there on the highways with our kiosks, and they're a wonderful benefit to our...
So you know they make a difference, you mentioned.
Absolutely, they make a difference.
But they're being paid for by the merchants.
But they're, that's right. And that's another piece. And the Chamber doesn't want to step up and pay for it.
So why are the, why is the county stepping up?
Yeah, I don't even know to me if this needs more discussion other than, I think we discuss it fairly much saying, other than saying no, I don't know how much.
Well, if we, if we want to, they, they wanted us to participate if they couldn't get these others, and their original ask was two, if I recall. Well, their original ask, I think, was for ten.
Ten was...
And that's when we said no to, and then they came back and said that they...
Maybe we should discuss it.
Still need a six.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about it on Thursday.
So we'll get it as an agenda item.
Okay.
None, yeah.
Yeah, non, yeah, non-consent.
Non-consent.
We consent to talk about it.
Right. And then the other item I had that Laura mentioned for discussion today was COG, Council of Governments. It looks like Sean O'Day has been pending a decision on how we want to proceed with COG.
The, I know that this has been a question on part of Commissioner Starett. I serve on the executive board of COG, so I, I'm lean toward supporting that organization. I know that Commissioner Starett has some questions, I have some questions, but on the overall, I think our connection to the associations does make a difference. I think we get a benefit. Now, if we can quantify that to a dollar amount, I'm not, I'm not in the position to say yes or no right now, but I would like to see us pay our dues for this year and then maybe keep track of the benefits of the contacts we have and what we see as a benefit coming from that membership, revisit it, but I would open that discussion.
You know, one, one of the things I brought up as I did with AOC dues is let's take a look and break it down as to what, there were a couple of things that after, we'd been paying it every year, paying that tab every year without looking at what it was for. And then when we broke it down, we, we had further discussion and we thought, you know, we should be paying this, we should be paying that. But there were some things we chose not to pay based on the fact that we didn't think we needed to. So I don't think we should just sort of, you know, write that check again because I'm not convinced based on, you know, Sean O'Day's discussion with us. That did not clarify for me what in fact the county is, how we were benefiting. So I'm not in favor of just writing a check and figuring it out later. I'd like us to really sit down and look at the breakdown and, and discuss each one of those items. I know GIS is important, I know there are other things, but there's some other stuff I don't think that we really... I know GIS is important, I know there are other things, but there's some other stuff I don't think that we really benefit from. So I would love to be able to just sit down with the numbers, and maybe even have somebody that we could, you know, just sort of a neutral look at what this is costing us, and whether it's redundant with some of the other stuff, because I know that the cities are paying for a lot of the same stuff we're paying for, and is that a redundancy?
I think that's a good, I think that's a good point.
It's a good, good point. They're two separate organizations that pay. COG deals with the cities and counties. Local governments is strictly cities. They're the League of Oregon Cities, strictly that. So I think there are separate benefits being derived. I do know that they're anxious to get their budget set, and so they need to know who they're working with and what the, what the cash flow's gonna be. So I'm, again, still in favor of at least paying for this year, and I certainly have no objection to analyzing the cost benefit and see if there is a return on investment. And if we don't see that, then put this on our agenda for a study in six months to see where we are, and then as we plan going forward into next year, we can make a determination that we're gonna drop out of COG. And-
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Yeah. And I think that you're gonna see a difference in COG with Sean. I've been very impressed with the way he's bringing that organization together. I think he's got some strategies that are gonna be beneficial. I think you've worked with him at League of Oregon Cities, so you have a little better knowledge of that. But in my two meetings that he's been engaged with so far, I've been very impressed with where he's headed and the organization that he is gonna bring about. So I had to miss the meeting. He was here, so I can't speak to that.
I take it a little bit different. I think I agree with Chair, is that I look at COG between cities, counties, and special districts. I look at COG when I look at what the county's dues are of COG and our main responsibility of the county, but I also look at, by the county belonging to COG, and this is what I don't know either, Commissioner, by the county belonging to COG, what kind of additional services are they allowed to bring to the smaller cities of Yamhill County that they may not actually be able to get to? So that strategic partnership, even though at the county, we may not fully use COG. I think a lot of our smaller cities, by us being a member, benefit from belonging to COG.
But they're paying COG dues. The cities are paying COG dues.
But they may not be paying that, that equivalent amount.
Well, I, that's what I wanna find out, because in discussions after that Economic Vitality Summit, there was, we were having one of our follow-up groups on, on land inventory. And when I talked to Doug Rux in Newburgh, and he was talking about some of the things that they were paying for, and I thought, well, if they're paying for that, and we're paying for that, and all the other cities that are involved are paying, so I really wanna see that before we write a check.
When are our dues due?
I would have to, I, I think-
These aren't, those are January of 2018, weren't they in?
September?
September first, I thought.
Yeah, I think it was September. I know that when I was in my executive board meeting the other day, there were two counties that hadn't paid yet, and we were one of them.
So, so can we maybe have a work session where we break down and have some of those numbers? And even if we have Renata here to answer and to bring some numbers? Because I know when Sean gave, because I wanna know about that revolving loan. And the fact of the matter is, it doesn't appear to be anything anybody wants, because it's such a hard thing.
Nothing to do with it. That's, that's something that we can't do anything about.
We need num, I think we need numbers like that.
I'll agree with that. I think on the work sessions, that's one of the reasons I proposed work sessions, because if I, before Laura left on vacation, I talked to Laura before the first of October, we were gonna get a list of all of the potential scheduled work sessions for October, November, December. We still haven't gotten a list, a calendar of our workstations for October, November, December. But I'm all for a works, work session. I'd like to do it sooner or later, not knowing what we have in October or November. I think that is really-
We can schedule, we can schedule a session anytime we want. It's up to us. I mean, all we have to do is make, give a notice. It doesn't necessarily have to be at our Tuesday meeting. If there's something that we really wanna discuss, we can set a meeting, and we can notify the paper, and we can have a meeting. So, I mean, whether we have a map of meetings or not.
I think the, the big question will be is also, what kinda data are you looking for, for this work session? Because that's also gonna dictate how soon we can schedule.
I don't even know how COG makes that decision.
What I would like to, what I would like to suggest for today is that we table this, and we have some communication with COG, making, finding out exactly what their timetable is. At the same time, we'll, each of us can make a list of the information that we are interested in seeing, and then we can get COG to respond to that request. We can break that down and take a look at it, and if there's, if we still have some uncertainty, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Yeah, 'cause I'm certainly for COG, but I think Commissioner Starrett brings up a good point of knowing where that's go, where that's going.
But, so anyway, can we do that? Would that be, would that be appropriate? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
It's all right.
Oh, man. And you told me we were gonna be here a long time. Okay.
We'll talk slower next time.
Any, anything for the good of your order? Commissioner Olson?
We had our EBPMI, EBPMI meeting this morning. It was a very, very good meeting. We were actually in there longer than hour, hour and a half. Saw the second revision of a lot of the statistics that are coming out on pre-trial. Realized that the way they have filtered out, that if you look at the statistics, one way they say one thing, like percentages, but if you look at numbers, they say another thing. So they're continuing to work on that. There's no question that we, as far as electronic, we, we're leading the state. There's no question. I mean, Ian said, Davidson said that, that we lead the state in the way we're doing that. And I think it goes to both our IT staff and to Tom, who's doing all that. And then, of course, Jessica, what Ted started went really good. It looks like right now, the, the county are supplemental, CJC, Criminal Justice Department, or Criminal Justice Commission, grant for the District Attorney's Office. We're gonna make a couple tweaks to it. They came up $1.3 million short, but at first, Multnomah County wanted to ask for all $7.5 million of that, and they said, "No, you're not gonna get," so they came back with $2.5 million, which was, still says, "No, you're not gonna get that." So we think that if, if we look at, if they take the administrative, some of the routine administrative costs out of everybody's, they think they're about halfway to balancing that. So right now, Ian and Brad feel pretty good that we're gonna get, get the supplemental criminal, just which isn't competitive. It's not based on percentages. It's competitive. They look pretty good that we're gonna get that. And then I'm still working with Cynthia on, a little frustrated with our, with our planners and our project managers for our YCTA plan. It's been about four months since we've asked for a detailed project dates, times, area. We still haven't gotten it. So I cannot tell you are we, it's supposed to be done June 30th next year, our plan. I can't tell you if we're one month behind, two months behind, three months behind, four months behind. You look at the schedule, it looks like we're already almost two months behind. And we were caught, we were caught up in July. So Cynthia and I and Laura have had a few of those conversations. I'm just not very, very happy with the job we're getting out of our consultants. And then our buses, hopefully, we should see maybe two or three of our newer buses within about a month or so, month or so. So other than that, that's all I have.
Just wanna say that our crisis, our peer-assisted crisis respite center is gonna be opening in November, and that is a house which will be used to divert people instead of going to jail, instead of going to out-of-placement expensive psychiatric hospitals, or being on the street if they're experiencing a severe mental health issue, to work with law enforcement. And we've got a house where we can put seven people, and they can live in that house for 14 days and not have to stabilize, and not have to be on the street, sent out of the emergency department, or law enforcement arresting them and sticking them in the jail. So this is, this is a big deal.
Big step, big step.
One thing I'd ask like that, maybe it's along the same line, may be a little bit different. I've heard from several residents in the last week that are very pleased that Habitat and the county was able to work out an agreement regarding the system development charges, and to allow both the Aspire neighborhood and the county take advantage. And that's exactly, a couple of residents told me that's exactly what they would expect to see out of the county and the city and nonprofits. So I think that was, I think as a commission, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners, that was a very good workout.
It's a good outcome, and now we just need to work to make sure that we take advantage of those things. I know the community builders are anxious to see that that gets distributed, because they've got 19 homes they're gonna be building here while they're supposedly submitting those applications in December. And so that's a, the first half of 38. Yeah, so, but I, you know, I'm grateful to the city that they're willing to make those reductions to nonprofits, and especially with Habitat for this vet bill. That's where we, we ran into it. We were going down to get the permit, but they have put this cap on the amount, but they didn't cap any individuals. So it was nobody, nobody intended. It was an unintended thing, but we walked in there and made that application for that housing unit, and got the whole $75,000 reduction, and there was no money left for anybody else. So that's been resolved, and so I, I'm, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner, because that is a critical piece, and it shows that entities can work together. If we sit down around the table and actually talk about what the issues are, so a good outcome for that. There was a lot of discussion yesterday and a variety of different things. Transportation is still a long way from being resolved, even though we have that big package. The devil is in the details, and now we've got a 300-page bill that everybody is relooking and revamping. And so I'm not gonna hang my hat on anything that's been said so far on that bill when you look at how much, how many work sessions are still to be held before we see the final and this interim session of legislature. There's no telling what's gonna happen with that. So, but we will have some revenue coming from it, but there's already some lawsuits being filed to stop certain pieces, and the federal government is stepping in, the piece with the tolling and all of that.
Yeah, I don't think that multiple counties, I guess the thing about it is, is if you look at the metro area, I'm very concerned with their congestion pricing. I'm not so sure that anybody really knows what's going on or how we can approach it.
Well, we gotta, there's a lot, a lot to be discussed yet with that. But that being said, we're not gonna solve that particular problem. We just have to be aware of what's going on, because it can impact the dollars that flow to our Public Works Department, and we have to be very cautious that we don't let those get away from us. With that being said, thank you, everybody, for your time and your energies, and we will now move out and do the county's business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I don't know if you heard-
Commissioners, the answer to your COG question, your dues don't actually have an actual due date. It's just been traditionally, an invoice is sent out in June, and past practice has been payment has been made sometime in July. But there's no actual due date.
Where are they?
You're welcome to see, that you're not like up against a deadline per se, but just-
Thank you for taking my time.